All right.
It's time to clock.
Jump right in.
Wrong person.
Good afternoon and evening, everyone, and welcome.
Monica, I went to some Wayne County Association of School Boards, and Kim May was there.
Yeah.
And she was like, Kim, we're from Wayne County.
She had to remember where she is.
Who am I here for?
Where I'm representing today.
So, good evening. I'd like to begin by taking a moment to honor the life of longtime Plymouth Canton Community Schools employee Charlie Jones. Mr. Jones passed away on February 19th. For anyone who knows that name, Charlie Jones is truly a pioneer in our school district. He started in Plymouth Canton in 1976 as a librarian for the newly opened Holting Elementary. He also served as a media specialist at East and Central Middle Schools, and at Salem and Plymouth High Schools before retiring in 2020. Charlie is absolutely a trailblazer. He was the first African-American teacher hired in Plymouth Canton Community Schools, and the first African-American teacher hired at an elementary school. Charlie is such a familiar face and a presence at our school board meetings. He served as the videographer for our school board meetings for almost 20 years, so captured every moment in this room, and just is truly a part of PCCS's heart and our family. His legacy and his life will continue to live on through the countless lives of students and staff and school community that he's touched. We are fortunate, Jacisa Sado was at his service yesterday, and to hear Mr. Howard, Director of High Schools, gave some remarks, and he talked about being a student in this district, and how he and some of his classmates, when they heard that there was an African-American teacher, someone that looked like them, they were in middle school at the time, and they were like, hey, can we go just ride by and see Mr. Jones? Representation truly does matter, and so to see that impact of Mr. Jones on our district for so many years, it's just, it warms my heart, and again, I just know that his presence will continue to live on. So I just ask that you join me in a moment of silence and loving memory of Charlie Jones.
Thank you Superintendent Merritt for leading that. We will officially call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM, and we'll start with a roll call. Shawn Wilson, President of PCCS School Board, and we'll start with my colleagues to the right.
Judy Westra, thank you for attending tonight.
Patrick Keough, thanks for joining us this evening.
Good evening, I'm Anupam Chiksedu, thanks for being here.
Hey, everybody, Lauren Christensen here, welcome.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Picard, and it's nice to see you all here.
Patty McCoy, thank you for coming out tonight.
All right, Dr. Merritt.
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson, and we want to thank her for capturing our minutes here at our meetings biweekly.
What, five months?
Every time we're here having a board meeting. I'd like to ask the remaining members of the staff to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt, good evening, everyone. Nick Brandon, Executive Director, Communications and Marketing, welcome.
Good evening, Kurt Tuskowitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Hi, I'm Debbie Piaz, I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer, welcome.
Good evening, Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer, thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening, Shante Langford, Chief Human Resource Officer.
Welcome, everyone, Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent Student and Family Engagement, and I also got my own microphone, finally.
Congratulations.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first agenda item is adoption of the agenda, approval of consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda, action item number 23-02-52.
Support.
All right, Dr. Merritt, can you walk us through?
Yes, President Wilson, this evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We have new hires for your consideration, as well as the leaves, resignation, and retirements of staff for your consideration. We have the approval of minutes from first, our special meeting, that was on February the 14th, and also our regular minutes, regular meeting minutes from February the 14th. Finally, we have the final readings of two policies for your consideration this evening, policy 8390, that's animals on district policy, and policy 8400, school safety information.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no. All right, motion passes 7-0. Ms. Langford, can you walk us through new hires, leaves, and resignations?
Yes, thank you, President Wilson. So this evening, we have for you four, I'm sorry, five new hires. We have a retirement, and I think that's it. So when I read your name this evening, could you just stand up so that we may recognize you? I have Alyssa Braun, who's going to be an elementary classroom teacher at Tonda. Welcome, Alyssa. I have Emily Bush, who's a social worker, she will be at Isbister and at Barron. I have Maureen Killian, who will be a resource room teacher at Bentley, welcome. Amy Sawborn, who will be a resource room teacher at Field and Gallimore. And then not in attendance this evening, we have Leon Wallace, who will be the Dean of Student Support Services at East Middle School. He wasn't able to be with us tonight, but we wanted to most certainly recognize him. So welcome to all of our new hires. If you'll give me just a moment, I'll meet you in the hallway with a little treat that I have for you. And then lastly, we have a retirement, we want to wish her well. This is Joyce Napier, she's an elementary classroom teacher at Erickson, and she has been with the district since April 22nd of 1996. She will be retiring effective June 14th of 2023, so we thank her for her service and wish her well in her retirement. That concludes my portion, thank you.
Thank you. Onto celebrating success with Member Keough.
Thank you, I'm excited to be able to present tonight two celebrating successes. The first one this evening is celebrating success will honor Jamie Allen, teacher at Workman Elementary, for going above and beyond for the staff and students of Workman. Ms. Allen is passionate about creating an inclusive environment, and always working hard to create opportunities for all students to feel like they're a special part of their school community. Among the countless ways she has supported students in and out of the classroom, Ms. Allen created a winter clothing drive of gently-used winter gear to be available for students in need during recess and outdoor activities. She also goes above and beyond by organizing spirit days and fun days, so that students may feel more connected to their school, as well as planning assemblies, kindness activities, and organizing drives for families who have experienced loss or hardship, to encourage empathy and community. Her students are continuously inspired and energized by her dedication, and Mrs. Allen is a true leader and a champion of the Workman School community. I'd like to invite Ms. Corey Johnson, Workman Elementary School Principal, to the podium to share more about the impact that Ms. Allen's work and the giving spirit has impacted the students and staff at Workman.
I don't know if you can hear me. Thank you so much.
I can, okay.
Thank you so much. I do just want to highlight Jamie Allen, she truly is a pillar at Workman. We have a hashtag, hashtag I'm Workman, which means that everyone who enters the doors of Workman is our school. And Jamie has been integral in helping kids feel seen, heard, and valued, as well as colleagues. She designs activities for people to make sure that they are a part of fun, and she's brought joy back to our school and in her classroom. She's currently a third-grade teacher, and her classroom is filled with lots of activities and understanding around empathy, kindness, hope. She's a valued member of our community, and I'm so grateful, and I learn so much from her every day, so I'm so honored to be able to honor her today. Thank you.
Ms. Allen, can you come up here? On behalf of the Board of Education, I present Jamie Allen with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Mile Award for constantly and consistently going the extra mile to support the students, staff, and families of Workman Elementary School. Would you like to say anything about this recognition?
Thank you. I prefer my third-grade classroom. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, congratulations.
We're also going to honor this evening two Salem High School Congress students who have led a very successful service project that directly supported seven PCCS families this past holiday season. Liliana Gumber, Salem High School Junior.
Saathi.
Saathi Nalmotu, Salem High School Senior, worked together to organize this project. The Salem Congress students followed their lead and worked in teams to purchase gifts and make holiday cards for the families. Some of the gifts that the students collected and wrapped included coats and boots for a family's first winter in Michigan, a gift card to cover the cost of the home's utility bills, as well as gifts that align with the children's interests such as sketchbooks, makeup, and even a fishing pole for a parent. This project helped lessen the holiday stress by not only providing some essentials, but also with items to enjoy. PCCS is so proud to be represented by students who are making a difference in their community. At this time, I'd like to invite Zachary Summitt, Salem High School teacher and Congress Advisor, to the podium to share more about these students' important work.
Hi, I'm just so thankful that you guys were able to recognize these amazing students. Just proud is not even a word enough to describe how just amazing and how grateful I am to have these students a part of Salem Congress. These two came up to me with the idea, and I was like, oh, my goodness, yes. Like, there was nothing stopping this. I could see the passion in their eyes, and they were so excited for this event to take place. So they got together, they made it happen, they got all 40 of the Salem Congress members together and said, this is what we want to do. They worked hand-in-hand with Liz Vartanian Gibbs, and just found these families that needed the help. And yeah, they made it all happen. This was something that they came up to me, they wanted to do it, and I'm just so super proud of them, so they're awesome.
I'd like to have Liliana and Saathi come up, and on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to present Liliana Gumber and Saathi Nalmotu.
Saathi Nalmotu.
Saathi Nalmotu, thank you. With Stars Awards for Students with Tenacity Achieving and Reaching Success. Would either of you two like to say a few words?
Thank you to Dr. Liz for nominating us and helping us through the entire process. We're really grateful for all your support and the support of the Family and Student Engagement Department. We're just really grateful that we had the resources and opportunity to put this program into place, so.
I don't really have much to add, I think we pretty much covered it, but again, like, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations again to all the winners, and special, special shout-out to Workman Elementary. So I have children who would gladly have finished their entire academic career at Workman, so I get to let them know that I saw their favorite teachers today, so congratulations. All right, next up is, let's see here, committee reports, starting with the President's report. So just a few updates. Member Westra has boldly agreed to be a guest reader, which is coming up in March, so I think this is your first official action as a board member, yeah?
Yes.
All right, so you'll have to take some pictures and come back and let us know how it goes.
So I alternate between total fear and excitement.
There we have it. That's the right mindset, that's the right mindset, so keep that, bottle that. Operating Principles, we distributed those earlier for board members to sign if they wish, and we'll get that copied and updated on the webpage for everyone. And then also, Dr. Merritt has been working with Chief Niddle, Kittle?
Naitel.
Naitel, to come in and present to the board, per our conversation before, so we're looking at either March or April to fit into the board meeting. We considered doing a special meeting, but if you look at our board calendar, we have quite a few special meetings already scheduled, and so our preference would be to make sure that we can fit it into a regularly scheduled board meeting. So we'll get more info out to the board on that. The How Schools Are Finance webinar is tomorrow, March 1st. Does anyone want to give an update?
It's called Money Matters, and there was an email that went out to community members and parents in the district. It's essentially Member McCoy, myself, and Treasurer Keough that are going to be presenting on how schools are funded, so please join us, it's a really exciting and dynamic presentation.
Yeah, we originally had scheduled this for last Wednesday, but we had a snow day, and we weren't able to coordinate everything to get it going, even though it was a webinar. But we really appreciate people's input and process, there's been some great questions that have been submitted, and we welcome the community's input on this. We've also extended the feedback for the budget process to this Sunday, because we want to make sure that we can use this webinar and opportunities to promote to the community. There are ideas and impact of what we can do in our budgeting process will be coming up, and we'll talk about that process and how schools are funded in the webinar.
Fantastic. Looking forward to it, definitely, I think it's such an important topic, you know, we get asked that a lot, how schools are actually funded, and there's definitely a lot of, you know, there's a lot of, what's the word?
Confusion?
Confusion. There we go.
We're going to try to dispel some of the rumors and clarify operating versus capital expenses, and all the exciting things that we talk about in the finance and operations. Yes.
You guys are really pumped.
Just to further plug that too, and Mr. Brandon, correct me if I'm wrong, I know you sent the email out, but you can view it on our YouTube channel as well.
That's where the livestream is located, but you can, it'll be archived there as well, so if somebody can't make it at 7:00 PM, they'll be able to watch it until the end of time on our YouTube channel.
Over and over again.
That's right, just study it, that's right.
Required view. We're raising the bar a little here. I'm a little nervous now.
Well, thank you again, thank you again. All right, and that's it for the President's Report. Now on to SPA with Secretary Sado.
No new updates since the last time I reported here, two weeks ago. We do have our next meeting here tomorrow at 5:00 PM, please join us if you can. Oh, yes, tomorrow's meeting is the Meeting of the Whole, because we have a special equity presentation looking at activities in athletics, so that means all board members are invited, all community members are invited, so it is the Committee of the Whole.
But we will not be making any decisions, so we just have to call it a Community of or.
Meeting of the Whole.
Meeting of the Whole, because there'll be more, potentially more than three board members.
Fantastic, thank you. Onto Policy with Member McCoy.
We actually met tonight, and we went over the superintendent evaluation policy. We were trying to get that in line with state law and contract, so we went over that, and there were some forms that were attached to it that are just going to disappear because they are meaningless at this point. And then we started to review our policies, we started with the 5,000 series, which are students, and so we've set ambitious goal of reviewing all of our policies in the next four years. We got through one tonight, so.
How many policies are there?
There's hundreds.
236.
236, yes. So, many of them are just minor edits in language, so we'll be buzzing along on those. But our next meeting is not until April 25th, because we only have one meeting in March, so it's April 25th, 2023, it's at 5:30. It is way down the end of this hallway in the collaboration space outside Ms. Rail's office.
Thank you. All right, on to the world-renowned FNO with Member McCoy, I mean, Keough.
FNO never sleeps, we meet all the time. We met last Thursday, and we reviewed some of the things you'll see on the agenda this evening, including the furniture purchase that we're doing for Starkweather as part of the renovation. In that process, we reviewed the financial reports for the month of January, we reviewed the general fund budget amendment that I believe is up this evening as well, as well as some of the budget assumptions that'll be going into the process that we're doing for the overall budget that we're planning for for next school year. We also reviewed an ADA audit at both PSEP and District-wide, especially with respect to door access, and we'll have some things that we'll be discussing on that process as we go forward, and how we can better support our accessibly, accessible students in this process. Our next FNO meeting is next Thursday, March 9th at 5:00 PM here in this room, and we again welcome the community to join us. Find out what all the excitement is about.
Fantastic, thank you. Onto Student Voice in Action, and we have one of our members here to provide the update. Kind of a mainstay, Josh.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Josh Patterson, and I'm an SVA member as well as a Plymouth freshman. I hope everyone survived the winter storm and the associated power outage last week. While SVA hasn't had a formal meeting since last month, that doesn't mean the work stops. First, we are excited to share with you that Dr. Monica Merritt provided a press release to the community, including all students and families of PCCS, that shares how SVA will truly elevate student voice and include it in curriculum and policy decisions going forward, directly in line with the Dynamic Plan. It highlights how President Wilson conceived of SVA, that SVA is fully supported by the school board, and how SVA is moving fast to kick off their initiatives. Next, some of our SVA subcommittees have met over the last two weeks to make progress toward their goals and to be prepared for our next SVA meeting in March. I'm also excited to share with you that some of our SVA members provided some questions for consideration to be answered in the upcoming school board's webinar on school finances. I hope people tune in to learn more about our school district budget process. Finally, in spirit of getting more students involved with the school board, SVA also attended tonight's policy meeting. Our next formal SVA meeting is March 13th, I hope to see you there.
Thank you, Josh, well done. All right, on to Ad-Hoc Committee, the Canton High School Mascot Committee with Member McCoy.
So the administration has appointed the people from the administration, so we'll be getting together and mapping out a timeline, so that at this point, our committee will be complete, and we'll be able to let people know. So I just got that information today.
Got you. So you would anticipate the full list of who's been selected coming out-ish?
This week, I could do it.
This week?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Like, I got it today.
Understood, understood, just want to make sure everyone has a timeline.
Then had a policy meeting.
Today. Thank you, thank you very much. All right, on to Superintendent Report.
Thank you, President Wilson, I wanted to begin this evening by just giving an update on, to our community in connection with our Dynamic Plan, and also, one of the goals that have been established for me this school year from the Board of Education, is looking at our student enrollment, and how we're really going to go after our enrollment, I'll use those words, strategically through our marketing initiatives. When we think about our Dynamic Plan, specifically strategic goal C, when we're thinking about partnerships and student-family engagement, and creating opportunities to improve outcomes from students, one focus is that enrollment. So board has charged me with really three areas to look at in this space. One, looking at our students who currently, and families who currently choose PCCS, as well as our families that are residents of PCCS but attend school elsewhere. As we talk, you sometimes hear at board meetings and we engage with meetings with our families, you oftentimes hear, like, there's so many wonderful programs in our district, but I don't even know what's going on. So really trying to amplify these incredible opportunities, as the number-one cheerleader for this district, I will take any platform to brag about our incredible students, our programs, our incredible staff, and the opportunities for students here. So really taking what you should see coming up, and Josh just shared, really taking on opportunity at least two to four times per month to get out these press releases, so everyone can hear, really highlighting programs, students, staff, accomplishments, this SVA committee and the wonderful work to really engage students, and that's a part of the Dynamic Plan in terms of creating opportunities for student voice and every part of their educational experience. So you'll see these press releases that are about what's truly going on day-to-day in our community. So we'll have a couple of ways that we're getting that out, making sure that staff is aware of everything, so our staff, we're key messengers. When parents are asking, what's going on? I want to know about early middle college, I want to know about this opportunity, then we're all, we have the same information about what is happening. Getting out to our families, but then finding multiple ways to communicate our good news and our positive stories. Everybody's not on social media, so looking at creative ways to reach members in our community. People that have chosen to live here may not have students, but we really know that a strong public school is the cornerstone of any community, so having opportunities to really, again, get that information out. We believe that we are the best option, but we're not afraid of choice also. We know that parents have a lot of choices when it comes to educational environments for their students, so we wanted to share that we are competitive in that space, and again, the wonderful opportunities that we have going on. Recently, with some of these press releases, we were able to share the good news of Echo that is the newest member of our PCCS family, and it's so timely, I'm looking at just our focus on school safety and security and the recent tragedy at MSU, and to know that we are really leading in a space to say, how can we continue to make our environment safer for students? So really appreciating the support of the board, the vision of our Director of School Safety and Security, and bringing forward Echo as an ammunition detections dog, who's also doubles as a therapy dog. So little pup is introduced now, and he's going around to the schools, just making friends with his handler, Scott Hutchinson, and Scott is also a member of PCCS, so instead of having a third party, this is truly a part of our PCCS family. So really looking forward to sharing that information. So that went to this press release, again, staff, our families, but we're also sharing with media outlets to just, again, encourage people to just take a look at some of the innovative ideas that we're leading here in PCCS. That fifth strategic goal, we're always striving for, to be locally and nationally recognized as leaders in innovative educational experiences for students. So just wanted to share a little bit about that and set the expectation, as you can send you to see emails from me, press releases from the district, and just people that you can contact if you want to learn more about just this all-inclusive world-class program that we have for students here in our district. Want to remind our community about a couple of surveys that are up. Treasurer Keough just shared that the survey for our community on the budget that is still ongoing right now, and it closes again on which date?
On March 5th.
On March 5th, so again, as we want to make sure that we have opportunities for input from all of our stakeholders, as we develop a budget that really is aligned with our Dynamic Plan, we look for surveys to really say, when we have these programs, what are our greatest need, and how do we align those resources? So we encourage our community to have, participate and lend your voice to that survey. We also have our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Survey, and this is really helping us to listen to the opinions and the perceptions and the needs of our school communities concerning DEI issues as we really shape the future of our district. And so the DEI survey closes on Friday, that's this Friday, March 3rd, and the budget survey again closes on Sunday, March 4th. Both links to surveys are available on the 5th, thank you. Both links are available on the district website, that's PCCSK12.com, and the information, as you heard earlier, has been sent out to all families. So again, just this goal of the continuous improvement on communication, transparency, clarity, back-and-forth, two-way communication, all aspects to continue to reach our community and get impact as well on this path to continuous improvement. And I will end right now, I will never miss an opportunity to amplify student accomplishments. I want to brag about our Lightning Robotics team, I know I speak about them often, but we want to extend a congratulations and a good luck for this award-winning PCEP Lightning Robotics team. They unveiled the latest in a long line of robots capable of placing the group among the best competition teams in the world before a packed house at Canton High School's DuBois Theater, this was on February the 21st. They have two robots, they're named Gridlock and Blackout, and they got their names as a nod to this year's Charged Up Game Challenge, which we will see alliances of teams. will see alliances of teams from different schools competing to build power grids. I'm feeling like I'm speaking another language by picking up objects and placing them in formations. But I tell you, they are on top of this and we are continuing to be so proud of them. The team consists of 170, 70 student members, and they learn robotic skills from 32 active adult mentors. So, this team will compete in Mishawaka, India, this coming weekend, Indiana. This coming weekend. And they'll go to Lansing next weekend. And they're in Saline on March 31st and April the 1st. A lot of information, but give them your support, give them your attention. And again, they just do an amazing thing. So, we congratulate them and wish them good luck moving forward. And that is it for me this evening.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dr. Merritt. And Members Sedu, Secretary Sedu, I was following you on social media and I saw that you were there. You know, how was it from your standpoint?
Oh, my gosh, it's phenomenal. So, this is my second time actually going to the showcase. It's more like an open house. So, as soon as you walk in, there's buzz in Canton High School. The kids are everywhere. I met some parents I hadn't seen in a while, so there's a lot of excitement. And you go into these different rooms and you get to meet the kids, see them in action. They're doing anything from animation to communication to business plans to actually putting the robot together. And then the showcase in the Canton Little Theater, wow, you talk about a packed house with so much energy. These kids were phenomenal. So, they unveiled everything that's been going on and their competition. So, the robots were there, so I got to see them. I couldn't touch them, but I got to see them in action. But it is a phenomenal program that we have, and the kids are just absolutely amazing. So, yes, I was buzzing all over with social media and just, you know, promoting them, but great program.
When we talk about that program, I would be remiss, and I know he is probably the most humble educator that we have in this district, is Jay Avnik. And he will always talk about the team of 32 adults, but I tell you, it is his leadership and his passion and his commitment to our students and their program that I think really just creates and nurtures this ground for their success. We just want to thank him.
Yes, thank you for mentioning Mr. O. So, there was a tribute to Mr. O as well from the kids.
Oh, that's great. That's great. We have some amazing staff here, don't we? So, thank you for that.
I do want to also jump in and I'll stop talking then.
No, 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 no.
But just thank you, because you also, when we're talking about marketing and enrollment, you just shared how you shared on your social media. And so, Board members also being a part of, I appreciate, as we are all key ambassadors to take messages when we're doing press releases and sharing them out on your own social media. You have followers, and it really just helps to get that message out. So, thank you for that.
Absolutely. I'm always letting people know, "We're hiring and we want more kids."
Yes, yes, yes.
Fantastic. Great report. Thank you. All right, so we have a presentation and a number of action items from Finance and Operations. I'll turn it over to Ms. Pius.
Thank you, President Wilson. I love following animals, kids, and robots. I'll make this as exciting as humanly possible. As you know, Michigan Public Schools have a June 30th year-end, and unfortunately, the state of Michigan has a 9/30 year-end. And so, the Board is, has to adopt a budget every year before June 30. And that is without knowing what your foundation allowance is from the state of Michigan and what your enrollment will be in the fall. So, lots of estimates occur in June, and we look to see what happens over the course of the summer. And then we come to you in the fall, early winter, to get you a budget amendment for the general fund. Prior, the legislative action this year was favorable, and so I'll go through some of the changes that we made, but we were very close to our original estimates as well as that enrollment number. And as Dr. Merritt mentioned, enrollment is a very important number. Really, to boil down in simplicity, the ceiling or the maximum amount that Michigan Public School is entitled to, if you're not hold harmless, we're just not going to that, but is the foundation allowance formula. That foundation allowance formula, it creates the ceiling. And that ceiling this year is $9,150 per full-time equivalent student. So, every student matters, and that's why we're concentrating so heavily on enrollment, because it's the one number we can control in our district. And unfortunately, the foundation allowances is decided upon us by the state legislature. So, more to come. Maybe not. Can I turn it on? That's helpful. Okay, as we always do, we conduct our, tie it back to our dynamic plan. And our dynamic plan, in this case, has got two very critical areas, and that's achievement for all students and to close the achievement gap. But in order to do that, we have to align our financial resources with those areas of greatest need. And then secondarily, we want to be a leader and an innovator, but we can only do so if we have enough funding through sound financial planning to get there. So, that's why we do what we do and try and get you as most accurate results as humanly possible. In the mid-year general fund budget amendment, we take a number of resources, as listed there, to obtain financial information. We take that financial information and we review and analyze that information. We conduct our monthly financial statement results. We present those at FNO. And then we review those budget to actual results for trends or variances throughout the year. And then as we identify those trends and variances, then we do a budget amendment. So, in this case, this is the mid-year. We'll come back to you before the end of June with a final budget amendment, and then we'll also bring to you the proposed for '23, '24. So, an overview, we'll take a brief look at our initial to mid-year budget reconciliation process, our general fund summary, and then some historical financial data. In the agenda for tonight's board meeting includes this presentation, but it also includes all the numbers and all the details for the revenue section, the expenditure section, a variance page or a reason page. And then I call it tick marks, but it's the explanations behind those variances. So, all that's at your disposal within the agenda this evening. Here's the reconciliation. So, we started the year in June before knowing those two very important numbers, at a use of fund equity of about $5.8 million. Since then, we've been able to adjust revenue by about 7.6 and just expenditures at 5.5 for a net increase to fund equity of 2.1 or a decrease in the deficit, however you want to look at that, to about $3.7 million. We'll go through those changes in revenues and expenditures, but primarily, we were able to adopt a budget this mid-year that includes increases to the property taxes. So, property taxes included in the foundation allowance is 18 mills of non-homestead property. That's your commercial property. So, the state of Michigan assumes in that $9,150 that you're collecting the entire 18 mills on your commercial property. That subtracted from the ceiling gets you the state aid. So, if property taxes goes up, state aid goes down because it's just the ceiling is $9,150. So, moving that ceiling up really does help tremendously. So, in this year, our original budget was $435 per full-time equivalent student, and what ended up being passed by the legislature was $450. Correct, yeah. $435 to $450. So, in the enrollment piece, we were also, I'll talk about the history as well, but we are also able to do a little bit better than budget. So, we budgeted at $16,188, and we're slightly above what we budgeted, but still a decrease from the prior year. And mainly, that's due to birth rates. We'll get there in a minute. So, again, here's our summary, adjustments to revenue. So, the property tax increases are due to taxable values in the area. So, we originally anticipated it'd be about 3% increase, and what ended up happening is about 4.35, so betterment of taxable values throughout the district. Included in that is also the new foundation allowance formula, the $9,150 that we talked about earlier. And then the MIPSERS, which is the Michigan Public Schools Employee Retirement System, they give us an amount of funding for the UAAL, which is our unfunded piece of our mandatory retirement payments. And so, that goes up as payroll goes up. And we don't really know those numbers until they give it to us in the fall. The adjustments to expenditures are increases in salaries and benefits due to our finalized staff placements. Reclassifications of some of those salary and benefits was able to be done by the ESSER funds. So, that's part of the COVID relief. And now, this year, we're kind of all the way through ESSER 1, ESSER 2, always in the prior year, ESSER 3, ARP, which is the American Recovery Act. We are almost all the way through that as well, and now we're into our 11T funds. And so, we're able to reclass some of our salaries to those for the specialized groups. You know, that's very restrictive as to what you can use. We increased transportation costs a little bit as we had a one-year extension with our transportation company. An increase in maintenance operations for contracted services. As you know, staffing challenges across the board. And basically, what we used to have as licensed technicians within our district as staff, we're now unfortunately having to hire contracted services for plumbing, electrical, and some cabinetry as well, because we're not able to hire those people in-house. Property insurance, if you look at that, the ice storm is not going to help that number at all, I'll tell you right now. And also cybersecurity. So, when you look at property insurance, it really includes all of that. And because of the excess of exposure and risk, the insurance rates for all Michigan Public School districts have gone up slightly. Professional development costs and legal costs are also up year-over-year. And then also, all this, we did to mitigate the exposure for COVID, those expenses used to be covered by a federal grant, and now they're coming back to the general fund. So, now we have the air purifiers here, the filters, the electrical and HVAC repairs, HVAC filters, consolial and other supplies District-wide that had to come back to the general fund. So, this gives you a little indication of where we've been on our enrollment journey over the last 10 years. That red section there in 2021 is that special year where we got a special formula to, I guess, shore up Michigan Public Schools for the super blend. And so, we got a softer landing. As you know, the state of Michigan has a whole loss between 40,000 and 50,000 students during the COVID pandemic. And unfortunately, those have not come back to Michigan Public Schools. No disrespect to us or anybody else, it's just that people made other selections for the education of their students. And so, we have seen a decrease now in our student FTEs. Mr. Tiskowitz talks about headcounts, and that's how we assigned staff to classrooms as headcount, but how we're funded is full-time equivalent students. And so, when I talk in numbers, I talk in FTEs. We were at 16,394, then 16,271 is our current count. And so, budgeted was again 16,188. So, we're up about 83 from budget, but still down from the prior year. Foundation allowance is also the second most important number. As you know, in that red line above, the Schools Research Collaborative in 2021 reestimated or reevaluated their base cost. And so, they said the cost to educate a Michigan Public School student was about $10,421. We're still very grateful for the increase we got from the legislature. So, we went from $8,700 to $9,150. And so, that $450 per full-time equivalent student is very grateful. I know Dr. Merritt's not going to like this number, because if we got the $10,421 that we were, we'll just say do, based on what the legislature has passed as requirements for a Michigan Public School student, less the $9,150 we do get, we'd have an additional $20 million. Let that sit a minute. And so, we're very grateful for what we do get, but we still are still advocating for the legislature to continue to fund us at the level that they have required us to teach. This is our fund equity historical data, and this information is, got several red lines on it. This is again over the last 10 years. The bottom red line is the early warning that was produced by the Department of Treasury, that's 5%. The middle line there is our board policy, which is currently 10%. And then the higher red line is 15%, which our auditors, Plant Moran, have recommended that we maintain. And so, I just want to point out that we're still above the red line. Last year, we were about 21.5%. And this year, with the amendment, we're at about 18.6. So, still positive over the red line of 15 that our auditors recommend and that our board policy requires. And then last, but not least, we wanted to just thank the voters for the enhancement millage. That's what the red sections are. And so, in the prior year, we had an addition to our revenue of about $7.6 million from that enhancement millage. As you know, the electorate has changed, the legislation about enhancement millages has changed. And so, it's slightly decreased this year to about 5.6, but it's still a significant part of our revenue structure is this enhancement millage. I will answer any questions you have on the amendment that you have before you in the agenda or any of the items I went over this evening.
All right. Thank you. We'll start at my right with Member Westra.
So, I had a question on the historical financial data, that, the next slide back. What happens when we hit, say, the 15% auditor line?
They recommend that, so nothing really happens to us. Our board policy is 10%, so that's our requirement as the administration. 5%, you don't want to be near, because then you have to do a lot of extra reporting. And the state of Michigan, especially the Department of Treasury, comes in monthly and asks for a whole bunch of information.
And the higher fund balance that we have has helped us very much with our credit rating as we go out to the market for our bonds that we use. That has helped us substantially in the work that we've done. And when we need to refinance those bonds, where we've been able to lower the costs of servicing those, that's also helped us in that process.
Thank you for pointing that out. And in fact, we're having our Moody's Ratings Call either this next week, the week of March 6th or March 13th. And so, that's one of the questions they ask, is that you have a board policy on fund equity and where is your fund equity currently at?
Okay. And then, one, another question. Can you go back to the first slide? It was the first slide. And I'm very grateful that you explained that this is a normal part of the process, because I looked at the slides over the weekend and saw the $3 million, $3.7 million deficit. And, you know, my jaw just about hit the floor. So, I'm grateful that you explained that at the end of the year, that, you know, this is not a, this is just part of the regular process.
Yes.
And so, I am correct in that, that that $3.7 million by the end of the year?
Not necessarily. So, we are estimating that we will use fund equity to the tune of $3.7 million. So, what happens if you look in your agenda, our fund equity will go from $40 million to about $37 million.
I see. Okay.
So, this budget year was actually planned, that we had planned to use $5.8 million in fund equity. We made a conscious decision that this was something we were going to spend down our fund balance to make investments in the schools. And we knew that we had some things coming in with respect to the ESSER funds, but not all the details were available. And we've been able to use some of that to offset some of those costs. And the district has always been very prudent about how they spend things. So, we oftentimes end up saying we're going to have this much fund balance use, or we're going to have, this is what our budget is, but at the end of the year, we almost always exceed that. But it's never, this has been budgeted as part of this, and I don't want it to be a promise.
Yeah.
You know, we're generally less than 1% off. So, it's really pretty quite good from a budgeting process in terms of the way this is done.
So, that number still could go down a little bit, but probably won't go down significantly? Or it could go up a little bit?
I would like it to go down. So, my goal in doing this presentation is to show you almost worst-case scenario. We do have vacancies throughout our district, and so those sometimes cover, you know, those are unspent resources. We don't receive every purchase order that's let. And so, some of those close without being fulfilled, because we receive the goods in a fiscal year different than what was created. And so, the services have to be rendered, the goods have to be received by June 30 to count it in this fiscal year. But our purchase orders are typically greater than what is actually received by June 30, based on supply chain and other issues they have.
Okay. Thank you.
And you'll see conversations about that, where we pre-allocate those spending as part of the next year's budget process, because we know that those things are going to be coming in. And you'll see that across the next few months as we go through this budgeting process.
Okay. And last question, I promise. So, the almost $1,500 difference between what we receive and what...
Schools Research Collaborative.
Schools Research Collaborative, yes.
Is there anything, I'll ask the Patrick Keyhole question, is there anything that we, the board, or the community can do to get that number up?
So...
Further than it has, I mean, I know it's already been raised, right?
So, all the professional associations, MSBO, Michigan Association of Superintendents, Michigan Association of School Boards, and anything you can do as a parent, community member to legislate, to the representatives in your district to increase that to be more equally funded. You know, you've passed legislation that says, "I have to do this. It costs Y, and you're not funding it to the level it needs." you're not funding it to the level it needs to.
The two short phrases would be educate and advocate.
Yeah. And educate is, exactly. Educate is part of the work that we're doing tomorrow, and the advocacy is the work that we've done in our community to make sure that we support public, or legislators that support public education. In Plymouth, our Representative Matt Colizar is the Chair of the House Committee on Education. And in Canton, Representative, I'm sorry, Senator Paul Henke is the Senate Chair. So we are really blessed in this community to have strong representation that are huge supporters of public education. But tell your friends, tell your relatives, tell everybody around the state to vote for people that support public education. That's the best thing that can happen.
Thank you.
Sure.
So I just have one comment to make is with respect to the school enrollment. We certainly want to capture more of those students that live in our district and don't go to our schools, but there is a big difference that's happening right now. The birth rates are down. So we're seeing fewer kindergarteners coming in than we're seeing seniors graduating. So this is just a trend that's happening. This is not necessarily that the district is losing students. It's more that the birth rate trends are such that they're coming down. And with our School of Choice program, we've actually been able to bring in more students than we would normally get from, just from the birth rate processes because we are a destination district.
Yep.
Anything else? Nope. Okay. Well, actually, just picking up on Treasurer Kehoe's point about the membership and losing students based on birth rate. I want to say it was a couple of years ago that we actually had a presentation that, where we looked at data from the past five to 10 years that showed us the decrease in birth rate and what it was attributed to. And I'm wondering if we can have a similar presentation or even in board notes, if we could get that information for the new board members in terms of what the trend has been and where we're seeing it go. I think it's just good for all of us to have that information because, you know, sometimes people question that. With regard to Member Westra's point, in terms of advocacy, I do sit on the MASB Board of Directors, and one of the things we advocate for is the equitable funding for the School Finance Research Collaborative. There is a collaboration between MASB and some of the other statewide organizations where we're all collectively going to the legislators and saying, this is where we need to be. And with that, I just need clarity because it's been a while since I looked at the report. When we look at that 9,100?
50.
50. That's the base foundation. That does not include things like transportation, maintenance, technology, et cetera, right? So think about what we have to do with our base foundation and what we have been able to do in Plymouth-Canton. So I'm proud of the work that we do as a school district, but think about what more we could do with that added funding on top of the base foundation, which is the more, you know, what's, the transportation cost is what, Ms. P.S.?
7 million.
7 million. We don't get compensated for that out of this base foundation allowance. So those are the things we really need to continue advocating for, not just more money, but why? Where is this money going and what are we doing with that money for our kids?
And on that point, the School Research Collaborative estimate is not including transportation. They make recommendations of how much more you need to include for special education, for transportation.
EL kids.
Exactly, EL kids, all those other things, exactly.
So maybe a workshop or some information on that information? Are you going to cover that tomorrow?
We're going to briefly touch on it. This is the flyby on all things school funding, and it's already a lot of stuff.
There's 100 slides.
There's only 50 slides. Lots of animations. We'll probably do additional sessions on other topics like this. We're actually not even talking about enrollment numbers tomorrow because we're only looking at the foundation allowance and the financial pieces of it.
Okay. So I think this just speaks to the complexity.
You'll have to roll back.
Yeah. So it just speaks to the complexity of our school funding situation and what that base foundation really means when we talk about what the School Finance Research Collaborative is telling us. So there's so much more there that I think we need to continue talking about and advocating for. So I have no questions, but I just wanted to share that.
Good feedback.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. You guys took it all. No, I have no questions. Thank you for your presentation. We talked a lot about this at our last FNO meeting, too.
I just have a comment. I know birth rates are lower, but I don't think that's the only reason why we have lost students to this district. And just some of the things that, the focus, I think, sometimes in our, that we need to refocus on academics. And when you look to see where students have gone, that's a lot of the focus. So I think we really need to maybe look at that also.
Just commenting, so. No questions.
I don't really have questions. I want to thank you for this. And I want to point out, a few weeks ago, we went to the Plant Moran Finance and School Law, and they gave some numbers on districts who had been hacked, who didn't have robust cybersecurity measures. And so it was a really good investment for us to put those in place because it was millions of dollars that districts are losing if they have anything hacked. And I just want to also reiterate the point that we need to advocate for additional school funding so that we can do all the things that we would really like to do. When we talk about, you know, providing, you know, after-school programs, but a barrier for children is transportation. Like if we had, you know, $10,000 a student plus transportation money.
Yep.
We'd be so much happier. But thank you so much for all the hard work you and your team do on this.
Thank you. I was remiss. I want to definitely thank Ms. Neha Imadi, our new Director of Finance and Accounting, for her assistance, Annette Jory, and Steve Barrer also for their assistance in pulling the amendment together. Thank you.
Fantastic. Great presentation, no questions. All right. All right, so on to Action Item 230253, Consider Approval of 2022/2023, I'm sorry, yeah, Midyear Budget Amendment.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of the 2022/2023 Midyear Budget Amendment, Action Item 230253, first and final reading.
Second.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Against say no. All right, motion passes 7-0. Now on to Action Item 23. Nope.
First reading.
This is the first read. Consider Approval of Resolution for Bid Package, Starkweather Furniture Purchase, first reading.
So as part of the 2020 bond campaign, every building in the district was assessed, and one of the main needs surfaced was new furnishings and equipment. So this purchase is for furnishings for bid pack number HS-3, Starkweather Academy. The recommendations are for the durable, flexible furniture. I believe we have a short, there's a short presentation, and Mr. Derek Dinkaloo is here to fly through some slides from TMP, our architectural firm. This is for gross costs of $424,427.15, and the budget was approximately $480, so this is a savings of $55,572.85. Hello.
So we started the furniture design and selection process for Starkweather Academy, excuse me, in November of last year with key individuals from district administration, curriculum and instruction, the building principal, and a select group of students who participated throughout the entire process in person and virtually. And these are the spaces that we furnished. So we did instructional spaces, the Learning Commons, a Collaboration Resource Room, and then they are getting a new STEM lab, which includes a manufacturing lab and a computer lab, and then some gym office equipment, or excuse me, furniture in the new addition. So this is a typical general classroom furniture. There are 22 primary student stations and two secondary student stations. The two secondary student stations are that lounge furniture seating that you're seeing in green. And then we just have a variety of furniture that include group tables, individual student desks, some sit-to-stand desks that include a perch, and some 42-inch counter height seating in the back of the classroom. In the science classrooms, we are providing lab tables, epoxy tops in the chemistry classroom and chem resistant in the biology classroom, and then some additional student tables in the chemistry classroom for variety, just allowing students to have that autonomy and choose where is most comfortable for them to learn. Art table is getting six butcher block and 24 art stools, pretty simple. And then in STEM classrooms, we have the manufacturing lab, which is getting butcher block work tables and student stools, and then student tables for the computer lab. In the resource room, we have some group tables and some lounge furniture, and then some, some more of those sit-to-stand height adjustable desks. And then in the Learning Commons, we really try to leverage the learning zone, so we have a large group instruction zone. Those tables can be flipped and nested and cleared out, and then we can bring in 30 additional seats for up to 60 people for large group instruction. And then towards the back, you see a lot of that lounge furniture that is really dual-purpose for large group collaboration and small group collaboration, and then some independent focus and study. That's all I have for you today. Any questions?
Questions starting on the left.
I don't really have questions. I'm glad to see that Starkweather is going to be getting some new furniture. For people who are not aware, Starkweather had moved into a school that was an elementary school, so it had to be updated for high school kids.
Yes.
So it's very nice. I like all the flexible options. Looks like, it looks great. Thank you.
Yes, and the students were really instrumental in helping make those decisions.
Nice. I have no questions.
Nope.
I don't have any questions, just a comment echoing Member McCoyn's sentiments. I'm really excited to see the furniture for the first of our four high schools be implemented at Starkweather. I think it's really great that we're allowing students autonomy and choice in the variety of furnishings. I also think this is a great way to pilot some of these furnishings for, you know, the future furniture efforts. So I'm really excited to see this and see how it continues to evolve for the other schools.
No comments, just echoing my board colleagues on what they're saying. Thank you.
And the other comment I would make is this is a little bit different than some of the other projects that we've done where we started the renovation and then purchased the furniture. In this case, the renovations are running a little behind, and we did not want to have this furniture not be in place for the next school year. So we're pulling this furniture order and process forward so that we can make sure that it's available for next school year.
Makes sense.
No comments, thank you very much.
All right.
Delightful to see all the new furniture.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion for Action Item 230254?
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid package EL 3, Assistant Playground Equipment, Action Item 230254, final reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, questions, discussion will start on the right?
Is this?
Nope.
This is the final reading?
We discussed this.
Still is an opportunity to have discussion.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, we discussed this a lot.
So it's discussed extensively in the Finance and Operations Committee meeting as well as at the last board meeting, so.
Yeah, so if there's no.
I just have one question. Are they replacing the whole playground or just part of the playground? I wasn't clear on that. It's like.
Most of the playground. So they have an evaluation and have to review it on an inspection basis every year, and those that didn't pass inspection are just getting replaced.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no. Motion passes 7-0. All right, on to, is there a motion for Action Item 230255?
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid package Key 6, E-Rate Network Cabling, Action Item 230255, final reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion, questions?
This is for network cabling that we're doing at the renovations that we've done recently, and we discussed it extensively at the last FNO as well as at the last board meeting.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no? Motion passes 7-0. Is there a motion for Action Item 230256?
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for E-Rate Bid Awards for Fiber Leasing Educational Support Center, Action Item 230256, final reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question, this was for the support center that was on Court Street.
Pilot Drive.
Pilot Drive, okay, as opposed to the last one, which was for.
Correct. And when we, again, discussed extensively in FNO and the board meeting, and this is a reminder, we had gone out to look at purchasing this, but the lease rates were substantially more feasible, or I'm sorry, favorable than the purchasing option. So we've chosen to do a five-year lease, and we will end up considering doing an additional RFP back in about three years.
Right, okay.
All right, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no? Motion passes 7-0. Is there a motion for Action Item 230257?
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for PCEP exterior sign-in purchase, Action Item 230257, final reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Like the others, we talked about it in FNO, we talked about it at the last meeting, this is replacing the signs with similar signs that we have already done in our recent upgrades, and this is for the three traditional high schools.
All right, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no? All right, motion passes 7-0. And then first and final reading, Action Item 230258.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution to purchase equipment related to ADA audit. This is Action Item 230258, and because of the urgency of this, we're looking to do this as a first and final reading.
All right, any discussion, or is there a motion?
Second.
Second, all right, any discussion?
So I just want to talk about this briefly. Mr. Grzinski is here to answer questions you might have, but we have been engaged in a process over the last several months in order to coordinate the operations, security, and technology departments in order to provide ADA assistant door hardware as well as a security card access function to our PSUP buildings. So we've started with PSUP, and we're going to continue on through the rest of the district. You know, security has become a greater need as of late, and to coordinate the physical movement of the door as well as security, as well as the technology that gets it all together, has been a challenge. And so it's taken us a little bit of time, but we have a plan of action now to have a base amount of standard equipment at our PSUP buildings, and then we'll move through the rest of the district as we get those audits completed. Mr. Grzinski, did you have any other comments?
Questions? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Which side are you starting on? Just one question, if we pass this tonight, I know it's been an issue, especially at the high schools, how quickly will it be installed?
March 6th, 7th, and 8th.
That's fast. That's awesome. Okay.
That's why we're doing it this quickly. So the other thing that we wanted to mention is that these are not the only things that we're doing from an ADA perspective. There is a number of other things that show up in the process, including the elevator or the lift that's at the Canton Library, that that is defective and is going to be replaced. And we're working through getting the bids as part of that process. However, this will provide access through, through some of the other entrances that are not traditional entrances to the library, I'm sorry, to the.
Media Center.
Media Center.
Media Center or Learning Commons. Learning Commons, I'm sorry, the new word, Learning Commons, as part of that process. So this will provide a short-term option to allow us to make that facility more accessible in this process. And there's a full audit that's been done across ADA, across the district, and there's, as you can see here, there are five phases, I'm sorry, six phases as part of this process. We're starting first with the PSUP exterior doors, and then we'll move forward into the interior doors as part of this work.
Thank you. Additional questions?
I don't have additional questions. I just want to thank everyone that's been involved with this in making sure that we are ADA accessible and compliant. We know that there's been a challenge with some students, and they've raised those concerns. So just to make this first and final and get to the timeline that we're seeing, thank you for doing that. Actually, I do have a question. Have the students in the.
Have the students and the parents been communicated with that have raised these concerns to let them know about the timeline and what's happening?
We responded with an email today with the scheduling that we have on hand right now.
Excellent.
And I promise to follow up with additional scheduling as the board approves future projects.
Thank you.
One other thing I wanted to point out that we talked about in FNO on this is that we're doing a lot of work to go above and beyond the minimum requirements for ADA. So some of these things actually meet the requirements right now, but you might have a door access and card swipe on two different walls. So although it technically meets the requirement, it's not user friendly. So the district is very much taking that in consideration as they're going through all of this process and this audit to make sure that it not only meets the compliance, but it is user friendly for those accessible users.
Excellent. Good.
Questions?
I had questions about the other phases, but we can get to those when we get to those phases. Because we're just talking about phase one tonight. Okay.
I have no questions.
I want to thank you for bringing that up because that was one I was burning to share, so thank you. The other part of this that we did talk about FNO when this was brought up during our discussion too, was not only informing the families who brought it up, but creating essentially roadmaps or floor plans that show the accessible routes or accessible access points for future students or future staff to be able to navigate our buildings safely.
Fantastic. All right, no other discussion, then all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no? All right, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Pies. Nicely done as always. On to teaching and learning with Beth Rail. And we have a couple of action items. The first action item is action item 230259 and it's a final reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider the approval of resolution for a new course proposal, Contemporary Global Issues, action item number 23-02-59. Final reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
We talked about this extensively in SPA and at the last meeting.
I have a concern. After looking into some of the resources like GALE, I find that they're kind of, that their views are a little bit more kind of one-sided and I feel like that it's not, that it's kind of more, as a terms used implicit bias, I would consider some of their resources are explicitly biased because not everybody would agree with some of the things that would be presented. And it seems like that some of the resources are limited. And I feel like that the cost of that, you know, kids, if kids are going to have a full debate, that there's many resources, it's free access, and that I think that to have something in a class that's to get different views and different opinions, I think that it's possible that some of these resources that other students may want to bring to the table may not be acceptable or considered, that they would actually be considered something valuable to the class. So I just have concern, I also have a concern that as eighth graders, they're very impressionable and I don't think that they have had the education to maybe sort out some of these issues that may be, you know, involve opinions and different things that they may have not even had any kind of experience with. And so I'm concerned that they could be easily swayed one way or the other, depending on what their moral values or their positions are. And so I'm just concerned about that. I kind of would see this as more of a senior type class that would be more appropriate. So it's just kind of, I don't know if they can...
Mr. President, could I respond?
Yes.
Just having had, in my past life, as an educator and someone who worked at Wayne Reeser, we vetted a lot of content in online databases and I did a lot of training with teachers and media specialists with online databases. And these, online databases are reputable, they're vetted. And when you talk to librarians and educators across the county and perhaps across the state, what they always say is, we want students to have access to reputable online content that does not take them into the world, you know, the open wild west of Google. When you Google something, you're not going to get reputable information all the time. So students have to weed through hundreds and hundreds of links to figure out what is valid, what is reliable and what is not. This saves them that time because all of these resources have been vetted by experts, by educators, by people who are in the academic field. And personally, this is one of the, we actually recommended GALE at the county level. I no longer work there, so it's not like I'm, you know, doing something, pushing something. So with regard to making sure that our students have access to something that is safe, that's appropriate and academic challenging, is a worthwhile resource for them to have, as opposed to just saying, let's just, you know, research something. The other thing is, as we prepare our students to their next level, whether that's high school or college, you know, workforce, they are relying on vetted content to do their research. And when you look at nurses, you look at accountants, you look at lawyers, doctors, educators, they don't Google stuff like we think people do. They have access to vetted databases that they rely on for content that has been, like I said, vetted and content that is appropriate for their workforce. So what we want to do is tell kids, like, these are safe places to go to for content that's appropriate for this type of work. Again, I would not say to any kid that, just Google something and have at it. The other piece is, GALE used to be part of the Michigan Electronic Library, meaning it was purchased by the state as a viable resource for students. So I want to just give everyone that context that this is an online database that many school districts across the nation use. And this was once part of the Michigan Electronic Library. They dropped it due to funding reasons. So we're picking it up.
Thank you.
Well, can I comment back on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, we want to, at the end of the day, I think it's, every board member can raise a concern or a question. And then I think it's appropriate to provide a counter to that, but we also want to limit, we don't want to turn it into a 45-minute debate.
No, I agree with you. No.
Yep.
I just wanted to say though, but to say it's vetted, it's also kind of, some people could say it's censored. And just because certain people, professionals, there's also other professionals in the field that may not feel that, agree with that. And that there's a lot of other resources that's not necessarily Googled resources, but resources that have been reliable for many people and have perspectives that they agree with. And I don't think that, you know, to say it's safe, I've looked onto GALE and I would question some of the things about being safe that I, you know, personally probably wouldn't want, you know, some of my own students that I would have a perspective on. So to say, to just have a general say it's safe isn't always mean it's safe. So I just, or that they more...
So this is what I would say, right? Because at the end of the day, if the goal is to, if the goal is to present, you know, true feedback that can actually move other board members in one direction or another, you know, we, I've said this before, what I would recommend is as you're doing your research, and this is for all board members, as you're doing your research, you know, send that out, those questions out in advance to myself, Dr. Merritt, because then we can actually give you an answer, right? Because what I don't want the community to ever think is that we're not providing a platform during a board meeting for questions. However, this is a business meeting, right? This is the business of the board. And so we provide ample opportunity, yeah, we provide ample opportunity for all board members to provide questions. You know, you have two weeks, you know, we introduced this two weeks ago, so you have two weeks to do research and then ask questions and send them. And then we can give you a proper, a proper response. And so I'm just saying that I want to make sure that whatever your intention is, your goal is, that, you know, you have the right platform to really be able to get the answers to your questions.
That's fine.
And bringing up a question like this at the first time at a board meeting, it doesn't provide you an opportunity to really get the vetted, or to get the answer that you're really looking for.
I don't know if I was really looking for an answer, I was actually just commenting.
Oh, perfect.
Just kind of like a comment of why I would have an issue with this class.
Got you.
So, you know, that was just kind of my comment, so.
Yeah, so if it's a comment, then there's really no need to...
You know, I was just saying what I kind of saw in it and I was concerned, what I would be concerned about and where I would rather see the class is maybe of a senior class, elective class.
Got you. Nope.
So that was kind of my, yep.
Further, any other comments? Yeah.
You know, feedback.
Are there additional comments? Nope. All right, well, with that being said, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no?
No.
All right, motion passes six to one. All right, action item 230260.
Mr. President, I move that we consider the approval of a resolution for a new course proposal empowering automotive technology, action item number 23-02-60. Final reading.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion, questions?
I have, same thing here. Because it's kind of focused on non-traditional, I mean, we have, we have women in STEM, we have women doctors, we have women in many professions and as far, and we actually have women in the automotive industry all over the place. And so I don't understand the actual, I mean, I think the class should just be for anybody just because of the type of class it is. And because we, in some areas, our definition for female seems to sway to many directions. I don't know, like, if we only had five sign up and then, let's say the rest of the class wants to be male, or is males, whatever that would classify as, I don't know that that would actually, there's no guarantee that this class would provide that kind of atmosphere for, per se, females, that this class would actually guarantee that for them, unless we limited the who can sign up for it. And which I don't feel like that that's, you know, I mean, my daughter took it, what, 20 years, what, how many years ago? And, you know, this wasn't even in, like, we've advanced so much since then and to, there's so many other areas in our district that girls are intimidated at that I don't think we even focus at, that just seems like a little minor area. And I just, so I just wanted to comment on that, that I just would be concerned of who might be excluded.
Additional comments?
Yeah, I mean, we spoke about this extensively at the last board meeting. You know, I asked some of those same questions, is do we need to do this? And one of the things, there were two things that were identified. A, this class is not restricted to women, so this is a class open to all students. But that we've heard specifically from our students again and again and again, we talk about student voice and student voice is really important in the things that we bring forward in this process. And those students have told us that they're looking for this class to be able to give them access to this in a way that feels friendly to them. And so this has taken a long time for us to get to this point and I think this is a good step forward for us in recognizing and honoring those voices.
Perfect. Additional comments?
I'm excited to see this class. I was talking to a friend who is a female automotive engineer and she had mentioned that this was one of the first classes that she had taken in high school and it set her on a path of wanting to explore it as a career option. So she's all for anything that will encourage other girls to explore this field.
Oh, fantastic.
So what would you consider?
I have similar comment. I work in the automotive industry and I've been in so many meetings where I am the only or a minority of women in that meeting because I work in automotive. And to see anything that encourages, you know, even in this case, it's just a name change, really. It's just a name. To see anything that encourages women to go into the automotive industry, I think is excellent.
Fantastic. All right.
So what, so what do we consider, I mean, I hate to ask this question, but what do you consider female because according to...
Well, that's not, that's not relevant.
That's not part of the class, though.
Yeah, so that's not relevant to the...
Well, it says that you would have females in there and so I wonder...
No, the class says that it's women in automotive technology. There's no restriction on the class and who can attend and who can apply.
So that question has been answered.
Okay, but the purpose of, the whole purpose of it is for females.
We'll move to a vote. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no?
No.
It passes six to one. All right, on to citizens' comments. So first up, we have Frank Menzel. And just as a member, Frank, you have three minutes to provide your remarks.
Thank you very much. Good evening. First board meeting in quite a while. Very interesting, for sure. So my name's Frank Menzel. I am the CEO of Official Driving School. And this is Dwayne Zantop, one of my lead instructors at Official Driving School. Recently, we had applied, we put in a facilities use request to hold driver ed classes at Salem High School. Initially, we were approved, but then later we were declined with the rationale given that there was already two driver ed providers at the park, okay? Before I was at Official Driving School, I spent many years at All-Star Driver Ed. And during my time there, we were at Salem High School for, you know, about a dozen years while I oversaw the program there. And at that time, there was three driver ed providers at the park, one at each high school. And, you know, we always had good student counts, I believe our competitors did too. And the rationale we were given for this was that two driving schools is enough, there's not a need for three. So I was curious about the rationale there and questioned that, for sure. I wanted to talk a little bit about us, just so you know who we are. I and my instructor here are both from Plymouth, grew up here, lifelong resident, started my educational journey in 1981 at Isbister Elementary School, graduated from Canton in 1994. My daughter, Alexa Menzel, is currently a fourth grader at Smith Elementary. My instructor, Dwayne here, who I met in Mr. Gary Gatauski's second grade class at Isbister Elementary School, if you guys know him or not, best teacher of all time. Let me just get that on the record, I know he's retired now, but he's, he graduated from Salem High School in 1994 as well. And has two students, one at Pine Hill and the second one at Salem, correct? At Salem. So we are, we are the local driving school. So I feel like, you know, we, us being shut out of our own hometown in terms of offering driver education definitely doesn't sit well with me because, you know, we are Plymouth Can. We've been here our whole lives. Even after the fact here, you know, we've been working with Mr. Eric Stamper over at the, let me make sure I get the name of his title right, Family Services, I believe is where he's at, providing, we just provided a free driver ed class for a student in need through Plymouth Canton Schools for him. So like I've said three times, you know, we are a local driving school. We think there's definitely room for one driver ed company at each of the three schools at the park. And we would, you know, respectfully ask that the decision is reconsidered and we are allowed to rent. And I can't promise you $3 million, but I can promise you 30 bucks an hour for the rental rate being paid every month that we're there. Thank you very much.
All right, next up is Robert Bennett Tendi. All right, perfect.
Well done.
Thank you.
Hello again to some of you as I was here last week. My name is Bob Bennett Tendi. I along with my neighbors Carla and Cory live on Ross Street in Plymouth and we love it there. I personally have three children who graduated from the district and I am very appreciative for all your dedicated service that you provide. And so we take this very seriously and we do appreciate what you do. We're here to discuss a very localized issue, which is the location of the Smith School gym, the one elementary school in town. We presented at one of those exciting FNO meetings last week and distributed a set of pictures that kind of show how the building is situated relative to the houses. And Tim Grzinski, who's been very gracious working with us over the last several weeks and months, is in possession of those pictures if any of you care to see him. Oh, shoot. Hey, Cory, can you get that folder? I have a one pager that Dr. Merritt suggested I distribute around, so that'll be coming around. I hope there's one for everybody. Thanks. And this is really, I don't want to, I know I'm limited on time here, so this document really will serve what we're asking the board to consider. We just want to work in good faith collaboratively with the board to find a path forward. Quick recap for those of you who weren't at the FNO meeting, a decision was made to locate this new Smith School Gymnasium. A decision was made to locate this new Smith School Gymnasium, just thirty feet from many of the property lines on Ross Street. And if you haven't been back there, the piece of land behind the school is massive. And I know there are valid reasons why the location was chosen where it was. But we had a playground, which we all loved and loved the sound of playing children, right up against our properties. And now, that's been relocated off to the other side of the land, and now we have this two and a half story building we're staring at. So, the communication really started when some of us started communicating directly with Mr. Grzinski. And like I said, he's been very gracious with us. But there was no upfront or direct communication by anyone saying, hey, this is what we're planning to do. We just saw this massive construction project start practically in our backyards and then got concerned. So, please take a look at that when you get a chance. And, you know, I'll be in touch with Tim going forward and we'll figure out what the right path is. But we're concerned not just about privacy and noise, but also about the financial impact, the value of our homes with this building staring at us practically in our faces. So, thank you very much for your consideration and hopefully cooperation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep. All right. Next up is Gina Stewart.
Good afternoon or evening, everyone. I am Gina Wilson Stewart. I am the president of the Western Wayne County branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. I know this is the last day of Black History Day, so I'm glad I'm here today. Our branch has been founded seventy-five years. Last year, we celebrated our seventy-fifth Freedom Fund Dinner, and it was an awesome event, our first in-person event in, I guess, two years, right? So, coming up in March, we will have our first in-person general membership meeting, and it will be held in Garden City at Christian Faith Ministries. Our branch is different because this is a county branch. Most NAACP branches are one city. We cover twenty-four cities, starting as soon as you get out of Detroit, all the way up to Livonia, to Sumter, down to River Rouge. That's our whole area that we cover. So, it keeps us very busy. And so, now our goal is to get, we went to all the city council, city council meetings. Now, we're going to all the school board meetings. So, this is the first one that I've been to this year. And I was here when I, I don't know, a couple of years ago, I was here. And I was excited because you guys run such a tight ship. It's so professional. And I bragged on you guys when I went to the next meeting, so just so you know. And clapped to you guys. And you gave our candy bars. I remember that. So, what I wanted to do today is just tell you that we're here. And one thing that we wanted to let the school know is that we give out scholarships every year. The deadline is April first. So, I would just need to know who to send the scholarship applications to so that the students can apply. They have to write an essay and give some information. But there's a thousand dollar scholarships and five hundred dollar scholarships, and then it's endowment that they get every year they're in school. So, we voted on that. So, that worked out well. And then, the other thing that we're working on is making sure that all of the high school students are ready to vote. Hoping you guys have something like that already. And if you do, we would just really love to partner with your students who, or the teachers who's ever putting on the voter registration. We all know the importance of voting because elections have consequences, and we want to make sure that the kids understand that their voice is very important. We know that if we get the kids voting, their parents will also vote, right? And we all say, what? Vote, vote. Why do we have to vote? Well, don't vote and see what happens. So, we try not to go back to what happened in nineteen fifties and sixties because there's so much positive things that's happened since then. So, we want to make sure that they know that their vote and their voice is important. So, that's it. Our website, NAACP, Western Wayne County, NAACP dot com. That's where you can find information about me and the branch.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right. And I think, I think that's it, yeah? Am I missing? I think that's it. All righty. So, last agenda item, follow-up board questions. Dr. Merritt?
So, we had two follow-up board questions. One was Members Sedu had asked for the turnover rates. We provided those in board notes. There was a little confusion. We had provided those actual numbers before as higher rates, but they were the turnover rates. So, you do have that accurate information at this point. And then, Member Picard requested the board provide with an overview of topics included in the new course, and those were provided in board notes. So, then looking at what I captured today, can you just stick with me? No? Did I put them?
Birth rate. So, Members Sedu requested the presentation and/or an updated presentation on birth rates.
Yeah. I just wanted to raise that as a topic, whether we as a board decide that we want a presentation or are we satisfied with getting that information in board notes, whatever. I mean, I guess if it's easier, if we could get that information in board notes, and then at a future date over the summer, we can start to plan ahead for workshops.
Yeah. Yeah. And I would add on that and just ask for, because I remember that presentation, and I remember when you subtracted the, when you looked at the total number of students lost, if you will, and then you subtracted the birth rates, it gave you kind of the net of the number of students that were lost. So, I'd be curious to see what's an average attrition for a school district, right? So, how average is it? Two percent a year, one percent a year, five percent a year? But what's the, so I would love to see like total number of students lost, birth rates impact, right? So, because we know X amount graduated out, so that accounts for the loss. And then, just what the average attrition rate should be so that we can see if there's a, you know.
We have those statistics. I remember those statistics.
Yeah.
Six or seven years ago.
So, for example, yeah, you're looking at capture rate. And so, we, of the students that are born, or grade eligible students that are born in Plymouth Canton, we, I want to say eighty-five percent, but it's been seven years since I did it, I think. But, so we still, we outperform in terms of the capture rate. So, we'll get those updated figures to say how many are still choosing Plymouth Canton.
Yeah. But what's interesting is I remember noticing when those figures came out that, I remember seeing the decline and remembering thinking that my youngest would be just about graduating when we hit kind of the low point. And now, here we are.
Yep. So, in general, we're graduating, we're at that area where our senior class is fifteen-hundred, but then we're bringing in approximately eleven-hundred. So, it's already a deficit of three-hundred. And that's, to your point about schools of choice, we're able to fill in, but not to the degree of that, did I do that right? My, no, I didn't. Tonight, I'm not doing those numbers, four-hundred.
And, you know, I think that might be a good discussion when we have around some of the marketing work that we're doing because it's really, that's also our opportunity, is the delta between the number of students that live in our district and the number of students that attend our district. Those are the marketing opportunity that we have as we go through this and that can help us to understand this. I mean, we're in a secular decline. It's going down because the birth rates are going down. And that Canton is largely built out. I mean, there's still a little bit of stuff that's happening out in Salem Township and in the Western Plymouth Township that's happening, but we're not seeing the birth, I'm sorry, we're not seeing the housing booms that we saw for the last forty years.
That's correct.
Great. Thank you. Were there other, that's the only one I captured.
That's the only one I have.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Sounds good. All right. Well, if there's no further business, we will officially adjourn at eight-thirty-eight PM.
Well done.
Yes. There is.
Wow, you are just.